Good evening, Carver. This is the zoning board of appeals meeting for the date of March 8th, 2023. Although it feels like December or January outside, my hands are freezing. We are meeting tonight to discuss a new case that has been filed on which we must have a public hearing. Before we open that public hearing, however, I'd like to turn to the approval of the meeting minutes from our last meeting. And those meeting minutes are dated January 19th, 2022. Has everyone had a chance to review those minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
And does anyone have any changes, amendments, or modifications that they would like to make?
No.
No. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to accept the minutes as submitted.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd also like to observe for the record that one of our members is not with us tonight. That's Sharon Clark. So accordingly, for the upcoming public hearing that we will open momentarily, our alternate now is elevated to a voting member position this evening, Ms. Cullen, who is here and is more than capable of making an excellent and educated decision, despite her alternate status normal. Now, the new public hearing is on case number 125-9-83R. The petitioners being Kathleen and Stephen Tardy requesting a special permit in this case pursuant to sections 2245(c), 5221, and 5300, and sections following of the Carver zoning bylaw for property located at 38 Priscilla Millens Drive, assessors map 125 lot 9-83R. So it's to construct a 34 by 24 square foot barn that comes out to 816 square feet, 600 square feet under our bylaws is allowed as a right, and all of this in a residential agricultural district. Is Ms. Tardy here? Hello. Nice to see you. Thanks for coming. We have not only received your petition, but have also received detailed drawings. Thank you for that. I'd ask that you now approach the table, turn the microphone around so it's close to you. This is your opportunity to speak to us about what your plans are.
You have a chair there? Yeah, bring a chair over.
Thank you.
Who wants you to be comfortable?
I actually went to the police station because I went to the wrong meeting. Oh, no. So I don't just up.
Bring that microphone closer.
And I just tell you what I want to do.
So you're going to tell us a little bit about this project, what you're aiming to do and why you're aiming to do it, and why the plan, the building plans as submitted are appropriate for you and also for the town.
Okay. So I would like to have a spot for my horse that I, I'm using the same spot as I used in the past with a shed that I bought. This is just a bigger, it's just a bigger building so we can store more of our yard equipment in it as well.
So what's going to happen to the old shed?
Um, we're either going to tear it down or we're going to put it on another side of the yard.
Keep going.
And so that, I think that's it. We just wanted a barn, a bigger space. So but what we, what we have now is in a good location and it meets all the requirements about how close it is to the well and the neighbor's property and all that. It meets all those guidelines. It's not on wetlands. It's just a little bit bigger than the town.
So dimensionally, you're okay, but it's oversized for our bylaws?
It's oversized for the bylaws, yes.
Okay, folks. Questions, comments?
Yes, I'm wondering, as I looked at the, at the plans, what's going to be upstairs?
Loft. It's a loft, so I was going to store hay or anything else, but there's nothing.
Is it a full floor up there?
It's a full floor.
And we're going to need to talk about that.
Okay.
Full floors are considered extra square footage in your case.
Oh.
So you're going to need more than, well, this is going to, it's going to come out to more than 816 square feet, isn't it?
So when I applied, they said it doesn't. So they said that they only count the square feet on the bottom.
Who told you that?
The people when I applied for the permit at the town office.
Who's the people?
Jill Martin and the other, I don't remember his name.
Listen to me.
I know.
The second floor, if it's finished with a floor, not one of these hippity-hop across the barber shop attics or second floors, which is just a beam and then a space and a beam and a space. If it's a full floor, that's considered to be square footage. This is the way we've always interpreted it, isn't it?
Correct. That was, that was the reason for my question.
Okay, so it's going to be a loft.
He's got a mind like a steel trap, this one. He's always two steps ahead of me.
It's just going to be a loft.
So, Mr. Poirier, could you calculate what this square footage would be?
Well, yeah, that's what I was trying to figure out, how much, how much square footage was going to be upstairs? What, do you know what the dimensions of the?
Yeah, so it would be, it would be 34. Let me get my own plans later.
Sure, that's fine.
It says that it's a plywood floor.
Doesn't matter what the composition is, so long as it's a full floor.
Okay.
That you can walk on.
Okay. Yeah, the whole idea is just to have hay up there. There's, there's not like water, there's, there'll be a light and that's it. It's not like there's going to be.
Let's focus on the dimensions for the loft.
Okay.
And then we can get into the other stuff as we go along.
So is it going to be the same dimensions as the exterior, 34 by 24?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so let's see. 34 by 24.
1632.
Well, that's another 816 square feet.
Yeah, so it's 16, it's 1632 total.
Right. And you're going to run that floor all the way out to the corner, even though I imagine that the roof line up there is going to be peaked, is that right?
My, my motivation to do that is because hay is a lot cheaper to buy in bulk, so I just, it would be really great, it'd be one, ideally one delivery to have hay.
We don't criticize you for the design, but we have to be exact with regard to the square footage, because what you're looking for is a breaking of the bylaw, if you will. You're looking for an exception to the rule, which is 600 square feet. So we have to break that bylaw, but in the process of breaking that bylaw, if we decide to vote in favor of this, we have to calculate precisely how many square feet you're going to need under this special permit that you're looking for. Okay? So you're over now by slightly more than 1,000 square feet. Would you say that's right, Madam Vice Chair?
Yes.
1,032.
Yes. Okay. Mr. Poirier, may you continue?
And then I'm, I'm assuming that in the diagram that shows the, the doors there in the front, there's a, there's an open 10-foot space on the other side with a roof over it? What's, what's happening there?
Yeah, that's the overhang. So like from my house, when I'm looking at the building, I'll see that overhang is off to the right, and then these, the, the front doors of the barn slide open 10 feet, and then there's another set of doors on the other side open 10 feet, so I can go right to the backyard. And then I have that, that loft door up top for hay deliveries.
But that, that, what I'm seeing on the, on the right-hand side as I look at the picture, that's, there's no doors on that. That's just open from front to back, front and back, correct?
This is what you're referring to in the plans, is a lean-to. Is that true?
Okay.
That's what the plans refer to it as, anyway.
The plans refer to it as a lean-to.
And this is not going to be four-sided, right? It's going to be open to the elements.
Correct. Yes. The stalls are right underneath that overhang, so the idea is that, that when they stick their heads out of the stall, their head won't get wet, or they can stand beside their stall and not get wet.
We have to take care of those horses.
But we do. So that's just the, that's a special perk.
If I had a horse, I'd want to live there.
Yeah, so, but that doesn't count in the square footage, right?
No, so long as it's not enclosed.
Okay.
Mr. Poirier.
Those are my two questions.
Mr. Barrington.
Well, he posed a couple of questions that I was interested in. Are you, you're going to be enough footage away from the property lines of? Has anybody approached you about putting in neighbor-wise? Everything's been okay?
Yeah, I talked to both of my neighbors, where we always talk anyways, and they're excited because it's pretty. And my neighbor on the other side works at Tractor Supply and he's getting chickens, so we talk farm, farm talking. And I didn't know if he was going to come tonight, and he was like, no, I don't want to go. What does it look like though? So he's fine. Yeah, the neighbor's not mine.
I have nothing else? Ms. Cullen?
I have nothing.
Madam Vice Chair?
I'm good.
Actually, I did have one more query. The only, the only dimension that you, that doesn't seem to be obvious to me, and maybe I'm just missing it, is the height of that, at the peak of that, of that roof. It shows the height up to the, the eaves there, but I didn't seem to see a.
Um, I don't know if it's, I don't know. I don't know what the height is. Let me see.
Is the, is the peak of the barn at its tallest height higher or lower than the tallest height of your house?
Lower.
It's lower.
It's lower.
By how much would you say?
I feel like I'm in court. I don't want to be wrong. I have a big, traditional colonial hip roof house.
I've seen a picture.
Oh, so it's not taller than that.
Yeah, okay.
Is it?
Thank you.
So when you say it's not taller than that, excuse me, does your yard slope down or is your yard level?
It's this level.
Okay.
Yeah. It goes, the house and then the pool, we have an above-ground pool, and then the barn's going behind that.
Okay.
Anything further?
No.
So I'd just like to go over a couple of things. It's three stalls.
Three stalls, and a, yes.
A separate tack room for the storage of equipment. That's all going to be on the first floor. Is that true?
True.
Five by nine sliding doors to the front and the rear.
Yeah.
And a 10 by 24 square foot lean-to attached to one side.
Yeah.
Yes?
Yes.
The structure is going to be two stories in height.
Correct.
The second story is a loft area with a plywood floor.
Correct.
Which you now know we're going to include as additional square footage. And the project size then is a total of 1,632 square feet rather than the 816 square feet, which would just account for the first floor.
Okay.
Yes?
Yes.
Is there anything else of interest that you think we should be considering here before we go to a vote?
Um, no, it's going to be really pretty. The, the company that makes these barns makes, like, they're, they're from the Pennsylvania Dutch people, and the quality is incredible. It's, it's a very beautiful, well-made place thing, and they, they have a lot of New England, they build a lot of New England structures.
Yeah, I, I'm familiar with them.
So they're nice, but they're, my place on the, on the building schedule is probably in the six-month range from, if I get my permit tonight, and I don't know if I need to, if they're a little after six months, do I, is that okay?
I think that's true.
Yeah, okay.
We'll, we'll give you some more direction on timeframes shortly. You're going to have electricity in this barn, I would take it. Is that true?
Yeah, I'm going to have electricity and I'm going to, I have, I have a well, and I'm, right now, I, in my other little place, we had the well company put in a pipe and there's like a hand, you know, when you have the handle? I'm going to have one of them in the barn, so I'll have that.
So the barn will be plumbed, is that correct?
Is, yeah, to me plumbed means like faucets, like, I'm not going to have a sink and everything. It's just going to be that well that goes up and the well that goes down.
Pump?
The pump. Pump goes up and the pump goes down, but it's not like I'm going to have faucets and sinks or a drain or.
You are or are not?
I am not.
No toilet, no bathroom?
No toilet, no bathroom.
Will there be any outside lighting?
Um, probably. I don't, I don't have any definite plans for that right now. My, I have rainfall irrigation and lighting, so they put some lights up in my yard right now, so I think I'll ask them to put some up. I don't know when because the, it's expensive, this is an expensive phase, so I'll probably eventually have them do that when I can afford it.
Is there any going to be, any paved access back to the rear of your lot to this barn?
No.
So it's going to be a pathway that you'll beat from the back of the house to the, to the barn? Is that true?
True. No, and I'm going to pour cement in the hallway and the stalls will be, to, to have the building built, they have to, we have to excavate and then put in my saunter tubes, my 18-inch saunter tubes, and then I need four inches of stone dust. So that will be, that will be on the bottom, and then the barn goes in. And then after the barn's in, I pour cement in the hallway, so I'll have a cement hallway and the other, the other rooms of the, of the barn will just be stall mats.
Two more from me. Where are you going to bathe these horses?
Um, I don't know. Probably in the driveway.
Okay, not in the barn?
No, no, nope, that, nope, I can't do that.
Okay. What's my other question? Just slipped my mind. Mr. Poirier?
Nope, I'm all set.
Anyone else?
No, I'm good.
Do you have to take testimony? Open it up to the public?
Yeah, momentarily. Trying to bring to mind the other question that I had, it'll probably come to you.
It'll come to you.
Like the plumbing.
When I'm sleeping tonight.
Yeah, exactly.
Do I have to send out another certified letter to all the neighbors about the increased square footage?
No.
Okay.
Does any member of the public wish to speak on this petition? All right. Does anybody have anything further to say before we close the public hearing? Ms. Tardy, anything from you? No? I noticed that the petition is in your name and a Stephen Tardy. Who is Stephen?
Yeah, that's my husband.
Okay.
That's my husband.
Are there going to be any corrals, outside corrals, that you're going to be building?
Um, not that, it doesn't already exist. The stuff that I have there has, is already, you know, I, I will have to add a couple sections, but there won't be anything, and that would go along with the barn permit, right? So like once I, once the barn is built, and tell me if I'm correct, because obviously I don't really know. I'm going to, I get approval from you guys for the structure, and then I have to go to get a barn permit to make sure I have a fire extinguisher and all the stuff I need for a barn, and then that's where the corral comes in about, the rules about the corral, but I'm pretty, I'm pretty certain I'm going to be within the boundaries of the corral rules.
Okay. Are you going to be doing any lessons out of this facility?
Not planning on it, no.
Whose horses are these that you're going to be?
Well, I have one horse.
And the other two?
Well, I don't have any yet. I'd like to get some friends for my horse, but my husband thinks Juan's good, so we'll have to see. We'll have to see how it all shakes out.
If you get into an argument with your husband about this, you can tell him to go out there and take residence in one of the stalls.
Take one of the stalls. Yeah, yeah, actually, I'm going to like the barn so much, I'm going to be out there. I've always wanted a barn my whole life, so this is really fun for me. And I, I did, I, what was I just going to say? I don't know if this is the meeting that, but I'm sure you know the right answer. I have a friend who might want to put her horse in my barn, and I would charge her board, but then does that make me business when I'm in a residential agricultural zone?
I think you're going to be okay.
Okay.
But you can always ask the nice folks down in the planning department.
Okay.
Whether they have any particular issue with that.
Okay.
So no lessons and one horse currently.
Yeah.
I'm good.
You should all come over and see it. Oh, it hasn't been approved yet. You can come over and see it. It's going to be really pretty.
We'll let you know when we're coming so you can order the pizza and the beer.
I would do that. I would love it. I'm going to have barn.
It's going to be a little warmer, though.
Yes, well, definitely. They can't come for a while anyway, so.
All right. Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we are now closed. We will take no more testimony. I suggest that the board make the following finding, that the benefits of the proposed use outweigh its detrimental impacts on the town and the neighborhood in view of the particular characteristics of the site and of the proposal in relation to that site. This is the language that we have to use in order to get to a vote on whether a special permit is appropriate under these factual circumstances. Do I hear a motion to accept such a finding?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I also suggest the following finding, that the board find that the proposed construction is not substantially more detrimental than any existing non-conforming structures to the neighborhood. Anybody want to present that as a motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I also suggest that the board consider the following by way of motion, that the request for the grant of a special permit under Article 5, Section 5330 and sections following, for the construction of the proposed barn not to exceed 1,632 square feet. Or should we give her a little leeway on that? Give her next to.
1,050.
1,050.
That's 18 square feet for two floors. That's not a lot.
Sounds good.
Let me rephrase.
1,650.
That, that the board approve the request for the grant of the special permit under Article 5, Section 5330 and sections following, for the construction of the proposed barn not to exceed 1,650 square feet. Anybody want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we've done our deed this evening.
Yay!
Congratulations to you.
Thanks.
Happy construction.
Thank you.
When it, the parts and pieces all come.
Does this mean that since Sharon's not here, Fran gets to do the talk?
No, you don't need that with the special permit.
Oh, you don't? Okay.
That's a variance.
Got it. However, I do have some conditions that I'd like for the board to consider, okay? First, that the, any outside lighting to be installed be by way of gooseneck lighting, so that the illumination is pointed downward and not outward in a way that might distract or disturb neighbors or others. Is that okay with you, Ms. Tardy?
Yes.
You know what a gooseneck lamp is?
Yeah, that's pretty much what we already have in, on a smaller scale.
Okay. I'd also suggest no lessons at the property, right? We don't want to get into a full-scale business operation over there. I'd also suggest that the, the delivery of water to the barn be by way of pump. Anybody want to go with that, or do we leave that alone, you think?
I think it's fine.
You think we'll leave it alone? Okay. So I would suggest that the board consider those two conditions, the one about outside lighting being gooseneck, and that no lessons be given at the property, right? And also subject to the plans of record, meaning that if you come to the building commissioner and say, okay, they've given me my special permit, here are the plans, you can't step outside of these plans now and say, well, I've changed my mind, I want to do this, this, and this. You're going to be locked into these plans with the caveat that we're now talking about 1,650 square feet rather than roughly half of that, which is what you thought you had.
Okay.
Okay, is that all right?
Well, it is all right. My, I, I have, like, in my mind, I'm going back and forth, that I have a lean-to over the stalls, and I think it would be convenient to have a lean-to on the other side, just for, for whatever reason.
Now, look, we, we've had this issue come before us in the past. You come before us with a set of plans.
Okay.
These are the ones that we consider, and these are the ones we hold on.
Okay.
If you come back with a substantial modification of these plans, if you come to the building commissioner and say, well, you know, I've made these alterations since I was at the zoning board of appeals, he's going to send you back to us.
Okay, even though it doesn't add square footage?
Yeah, because I think the building commissioner would say, this is not the same plan. So if you feel as if you want to make a modification to the plans that we have considered this evening, we can take a timeout now and have you come back in a month. But if you're looking to get everything lined up now based on the plans of record, then we can vote on these conditions and say, good luck, goodbye.
Okay.
Need a minute to think about it?
Yeah, I've, I've been going back and forth.
Do you want us to suspend for five minutes? You think about it? Call your husband if you feel as if you need to?
Yes.
But these plans will need to be redrawn if you're thinking about.
Yes.
Lean-tos on both sides now.
Yes, so the plans would be redrawn, and of course, it adds, I'll just, it adds $5,000 square, $5,000 to the project, so I'm like, I don't, I don't know if I want to do that, but I think over the long haul, I would be glad if I did. So that's why I'm sort of like iffy, and they'll, they'll change the, they'll just redraw it and resend it.
We, and I can tell you this, cats, no judgment on your decision to add or not add. We don't consider cost under these circumstances either. This is a proposal that you bring to us. This is the proposal that we have tonight, right?
Okay.
And if you're going to be adding more to the other side, even though it doesn't increase your square footage because it's going to remain open, I would suggest that you're probably going to have to come back to us in the future.
Huh.
Because the building commissioner will likely say, and I don't want to speak for him, but I would not be surprised if he would say, well, this is a substantial modification. This is not subject to the plan of record. This is the plan of record, the one that you gave us.
Right, right, yes.
And like I said, we've had people come before us saying, this is what we're going to do. We vote in favor, then, you know, a few days later, they go down to the building department with a revised plan.
Oh.
And that doesn't go over very well.
Right.
So it's entirely up to you. We can take a timeout now and come back at this in a month with a revised plan, or we can vote on what we have.
Feel like I'm on a game show. Show number one, go number two, I got to go home, how am I going to feel when I go home with the choice?
Why don't we take a five-minute break?
Okay.
So you can think about this.
Okay.
We will suspend for five minutes. It's now 7:30. We'll come back at 7:35.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I am going to keep the plans as they are.
Okay. So we are back to our discussion concerning conditions, and I know Mr. Barrington had a thought.
Oh.
Of ensuring the height of the building goes along with our bylaws, so it doesn't go above what our bylaws has.
Okay.
Why don't we say not to exceed the height of the dwelling on the property?
Okay, yeah.
Is that acceptable?
Yes, I will go along with that.
Mr. Poirier, Ms. Mill?
Fine.
So to recapitulate, I think we have three conditions, one, two, three, four.
We're not doing water, right?
We're not doing water. So outside lighting by way of gooseneck lamp. We're going to be doing no lessons at the. So, outside lighting by way of gooseneck lamp, we're going to be doing no lessons at the property, because we don't want a business developing there. And three, subject to the plans of record.
And the height.
And the height.
And the height, yep.
Can I stand, Ms. Tardy?
I do.
Does anyone have...
Do we need a motion for that?
Yes, I need a motion for the board to consider adopting these four conditions.
I'll make a motion that the board adopt the four conditions as they relate to height, lighting, plans of record, and, what was the last one?
Water, I think you said water.
No business at the...
No business.
Oh, no business.
No lessons.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, now, at long last, we are done.
Oh, God, okay. Thank you so much, and thank you for that break to let me think for a minute.
Yep, absolutely. We all need that break, some longer than others, especially me.
So, now what do I do? Do I go back to the town offices?
Yes. Ms. Mello, why don't you give a little talk?
So, we'll be writing up this decision, which will be submitted down to the permitting department, and I believe, is there a twenty-day appeal? Yeah, there's a twenty-day appeal, once the decision is put in, does she have to go to the registry of deeds?
It's always good.
With this one, with the special permit?
Yeah.
Okay, so after the twenty-day appeal period, you can go down to the permitting department, they will give you the decision, you take the decision to the registry of deeds, you have it recorded there, then you bring the decision back here, and you'll be able to get your building permit.
Wow, okay.
Okay?
And that's gonna be written, instructions will be written when I get that?
Yeah, yeah. Any questions, you can go to the nice folks over at the planning department. If we're wrong about having to record at the registry of deeds, I'm sure they'll tell you. I wanna let you know, I write these decisions, and I'm very quick on the turnaround.
Thank you.
So, this decision will probably be written by tomorrow.
Wow, thank you.
God willing. Then I circulate it amongst the other board members, so I'll probably, since tomorrow's Thursday, I'll probably give them until, through the weekend to review it, at which point, on Monday, I'll be most likely going down to town hall and signing for everybody, and at that point, the town clerk will stamp it, received, and the twenty-day period runs from that point.
Okay.
So, you will not have to wait long before that twenty-day clock starts to tick.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're very fast on this stuff.
All right, and I was a little late, and I missed introduction, so what is your name?
Let's start from my left. This is Jennifer Cullum, who's sitting next to you, our newest member, but also one of our most erudite members.
Ooh, I must say.
James Barrington, next to her. Mark Poirier, next to him. To my immediate right is the vice chair, Frances Mello, and I am Stephen Gray.
Stephen Gray, and you're an attorney?
Yes, I am.
Yes, you are, okay.
Don't hold that against her.
Yeah, no.
Yes, I am.
Yeah.
And they all know me in town hall, so if they have any questions, or you have any questions, they know how to get ahold of me.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Good evening.
Thank you so much.
Nice to have met, yeah.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Take good care of those horses. Do we have anything further to discuss this evening, since that was our only public hearing on the agenda?
No.
I can tell everybody that although applications are being filed, and questions are being raised on at least one that I'm aware of right now, no appeal has been launched, so in a roundabout way, what I'm trying to say is we have no pending cases in the queue, although that could change any time. So, I don't think we need to have any discussion about when our next meeting is gonna be, because I don't wanna have to come back at you all and say, "Never mind," like we had to do last month, right? We know that we're gonna be meeting on Wednesdays now, and if a case comes up, then, you know, we'll schedule it on a Wednesday, allowing for appropriate time for publication, which is always an issue. Even if we scheduled something for the second Wednesday, let's say, of April, it might not be enough time to get publication done, especially with the holiday coming, right?
Yep.